Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 to order. It is 6:32. Ms. Monroe, if you'd like to call the roll.
Mayor John Barnard.
Here.
Tiffany Hollis.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Here.
Jeff Barr.
Present.
Wes Cobble.
Here.
Dave Seeland.
Here.
Al Rassini.
Here. Father Stephen Smith from the Church of Ascension is, had to leave yesterday morning for a quick trip, so he could not be here tonight for the invocation, so if you could please stand. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this wonderful city and all those who make it so wonderful. Lord, we thank you for all the police and firefighters that keep us safe. We thank you for all the workers who do the jobs that many of us don't want to do. We just thank you so much for them. We thank you for those who serve our council and their willingness to do it, and we're so grateful for that. We live in this town and that we can call it home. Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Action on minutes. We have the April 16th, 2024 minutes. We've all received them and had a chance to review them. Does anyone have any changes or anything they would like to add to it? Hearing none. What is the will of council?
Motion to approve as written.
All right, one second.
Dave Seeland.
Yes.
Al Rassini.
Yes.
Jeff Barr.
Affirm.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Tiffany Hollis.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Wes Cobble.
Yes.
Before we get to the regular items, I would like to have everyone here wish Mr. Dave Seeland a happy birthday today. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. I didn't know you could turn red. Match the shirt. Next week is National Police Week, and in honor of that, we would have a proclamation for the police. Can we have our two officers come up here?
I thought it was starting Wednesday. It's not tomorrow? We're lighting up blue tomorrow, man.
The chief didn't want to come up here, so I'm having these two come. So proclamation, National Police Week 2024, whereas the City of Johnstown Council recognizes National Police Week 2024 and the great service and sacrifice that the law enforcement professionals provide to the community and honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to serve and protect. And whereas the members of City of Johnstown Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding our citizens who complete their lives on the line every day, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities hazards and sacrifices for their police department, and that the members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder. And whereas the City of Johnstown wishes to recognize our officers during National Police Week 2024 and to honor the service and sacrifice of all law enforcement officers, especially those who have lost their lives in the line of duty while protecting our communities. And now therefore, it is claimed that the City of Johnstown calls upon all its citizens to join the nation in thanking our police officers and their families for their service and dedication to the community. And I, Mayor Donald Barnard, on behalf of the City Council, can hereby recognize May 12th through 18th, 2024, as National Police Week and hereby call on our community to help this group to service our law enforcement officers. I think that our police department is short-staffed right now, and we have one officer that's injured right now. And it means all our police officers have to step back. These guys are working shifts they normally don't work, are away from their families more often, and they're doing it to keep us safe. So I'd like to thank them. I'd also like to thank the chief, who in the last year and a half has not had a single officer leave this department the first time in the longest time in the history of our department that we haven't had an officer leave. So we're in great hands, and I think the city should be very grateful for our officers. Thank you.
Where we are are not as different as we should. It's just a matter of...
And we have one more proclamation tonight, and Caitlin Casto. And you complain for this. So I'm not sure how many people know this, but we have a state wrestler here. I believe you're the first female from the City of Johnstown to ever qualify for state, so congratulations. So our proclamation is, whereas the City of Johnstown Council would like to recognize Caitlin Casto on an outstanding wrestling season, and whereas Caitlin finished with a record of 27-5, and whereas placed third at both the pre-regional and regional tournaments, and whereas qualified for the Women's Ohio State Wrestling Tournament from a field of 1,200 female high school wrestlers, in which 192 compete for a title in 16 weight classes, and whereas received honorable mention in the Ohio All Metro Girls Wrestling Division, and whereas was the Johnstown High School Junior Award winner for most outstanding wrestler, and whereas earned the title of Johnstown High School Wrestler of the Year. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donald Barnard, on behalf of the Johnstown City Council, can hereby call on our community to congratulate Caitlin Casto on her 2023-2024 Johnstown High School Wrestling Season. She has brought tremendous pride to Johnstown and our high school and to the Johnstown community.
Do you want to get pictures?
You want to cooperate to get pictures with the officers and with her?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Separately or together?
Sure families here and they'd like to get some photos?
Absolutely.
Would the rest of the council like to bring the pictures? I think we should.
I'm going to join.
Let's do the proclamation first.
I mean, I don't mind dressing right here.
All right. Okay, cheese. One, two, three.
I guess I'll...
Another one.
Hey ma'am, put the guns away. It's not your show.
We don't have anybody here yet. No, we don't have anybody in Johnstown yet. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You comment on Caitlin?
Yeah.
She has a whole drawer of them.
Never mind that. She knows how to deal.
We could stop that.
Nah, she knows.
Okay, so we've kind of started something new recently. We're having all the nonprofits come and present and let the city kind of know what's going on in the city this year. That way, all the residents have an idea. You know, it's not everybody looks at Facebook, so hopefully they'll watch YouTube or come. But tonight, we have Downtown Johnstown, Inc. It's one of our nonprofits in the city, and we have their president, Shawna Winsen-Reed, to speak tonight.
We also have Jack Cobble, the vice president, that doesn't want to come talk with me.
Yeah, that way they can hear you at home.
Okay.
Good idea, Jack.
Thanks. Appreciate you.
He sat back there.
Ryan, I can make you come talk with me, too.
I talk too much.
You know.
All right. Hi, guys. For anyone that doesn't know me, like he said, my name is Shawna Winsen-Reed. I'm the current president of Downtown Johnstown, Inc., or DJI as we call it for short. DJI is a local nonprofit that's been serving the community since 2008. The first big project that DJI was involved with was the building of the beloved Cupola at the Opera House on Town Square. And most recently, we have worked to provide the wreaths to the door in the downtown area at Christmas time through sponsorship and wonderful community volunteers. DJI provides itself on putting on fun, free events for the community throughout the year. So I just wanted to touch on some of our big ones that we are hosting. First up is Clean Sweep. This will be on Saturday, May 18th. We're going to be meeting at the town square at 8:30 a.m. Typically, in the past, we do mulching, things like that. That's been taken care of. So this year, it'll be more of a clean focus, picking up trash, weeding, things like that. We will start on the square. Our goals are to hit, like, the slanted lot, the lot behind the buildings, like where the Fireman's Festival is, down Main Street, and then depending on the amount of volunteers and time, we'll hit Pratt, and then we'll go out to some of the local parks, like Hannah and Rolling Meadows. So anybody that wants to join us if you get bored, Saturday, May 18th, 8:30. And then the fun events. Every year, we host Spring Fest and Summer Fest. Most of these events are fairly similar to each other. We do food trucks, live music, beer and wine garden. They're held on the square. In town, Spring Fest will be held on Saturday, June 8th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Summer Fest will be held on Saturday, August 17th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. as well. New this year on those, we have a bounce house and face painting for the kids, so something a little extra for them. At the fireworks event that the Events Committee is putting on, on July 5th, again, like last year, we are going to be putting on the Dunk Tank and some other family-friendly games. We do still need some other dunkies, if anyone's interested. We do that as a donation for balls. And then all the proceeds go to a local charity. This year's charity will be Angels Persist. And then Sunday, September 15th, from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. will be the Cupola Classic Car Show, again, held on the square, car show, trophies, DJ, food trucks, all that good stuff. And then our new event for this year will be our Fall Fest Kickoff, which is going to be on Saturday, October 19th, from 3:00 to 8:00. It's going to be more family activity-focused, sack races, pie eating contests, bounce houses, things like that. We will also have a band. We are looking at having a hog roast and live music for that. And then it will be followed by two weeks of fall activities that's going to be hosted by the Johnstown Chamber. And then I have little event flyers. If anybody wants one, I'll send them over here for you guys to grab. Basically, just hits on everything that we're doing this year. And then if anyone is interested in joining, our meetings are held on the second Wednesday of each month at the library. Except for June, it's going to be a week early due to our summer, or Spring Fest. And then if you have any questions, you can feel free to reach out to me.
When did you say the October event was?
It'll be Fall Fest. So kind of like Spring Fest and Summer Fest, it'll be on the square, live music. We're going to do a hog roast instead of food trucks.
And what day?
October 19th. It's the bye week for Ohio State football.
I know that. I know that. I know you know, too.
I planned it that way. Just saying. Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I heard hog roast appropriately.
Hog roast, right? That's fall.
Absolutely.
I hope it goes well. We found a local business that we're working with to cater it for us, so I think it'll be good.
Anybody have any questions for?
I'll be there.
Hopefully have a lot for.
Do we want to get in the Dunk Tank? If not already, I got you, and I got you, and I got you. I got half of you.
I think you get a lot of people out of Tiffany was up there, too.
You want in?
I didn't say Jeff.
I already am.
If Tiffany's up there, I don't need to be up there. That's all the money. Everybody's going to go.
All right. Can I set these on the table?
Yes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda tonight, back in, I think, October, November, there was a few council members that had a discussion, and we wanted to increase the communications within the city. So we have a slight problem here in the city. We have no local newspaper. We have no local TV station. And the only way really to get information out is through Facebook. And what we found is not everyone has Facebook. My daughter tells me only the old people have Facebook, so... Yeah. So how do you get information out to a public when you need to get it out there? We have a website, but not everybody checks the website. So we had a discussion, and we met with Mr. Sia here to kind of brainstorm. And he kind of took it as a project, and he's going to present tonight on his findings, because he interviewed all of us and let us know what he found. So Mr. Sia, if you'd like to present.
No problem. It can sit up here. Associate Kevin here was telling me that I should volunteer for the Dunk Tank. Nobody wants to dunk in soccer.
This is a slideshow, I guess.
They'd have to kick the ball.
If you're going to give me a slide, I got to be able to read it.
Sorry for the delay here. So, Donnie, you said we've got maybe 15 minutes or so?
15, 20, 25 minutes. Our roll.
We'll try to go through pretty quickly here. So first off, yes, Donnie is correct. My name is Frank Sia. I'm a local Johnstown resident. I served on the GYAA board as the soccer commissioner, and I've lived in Johnstown since 2016. So I'm coming up on a decade now, almost. But as Donnie had mentioned, several months ago, I was approached to develop a bit of a strategic communications plan for the City of Johnstown, and I didn't take that task lightly. I decided to do my due diligence and find out exactly what needs to be accomplished from this effort. I think sometimes we can have some reactions where we want to just push things out because we've got information versus thinking carefully about maybe what we should communicate and how we should communicate. And I think as we have this wonderful, growing community, certainly grown since I've been here and is obviously set to grow, it was pretty evident through some of these conversations that there's a dire need to have the proper resources to move everything forward, not only in this plan that we're going to present today, but also the comprehensive plan that you shared with the community. So having said that, let's get right into it. And I'll introduce my associate Kevin here in just a few minutes and let him make a little introduction as well and explain the context for why we're here together. So let's get into it. The main revenue source for Johnstown is, of course, our tax base, right? Represents probably close to 80% of the revenue from the municipal income tax. We sought that tax increase to take place in the last election, and it did fail, which means there's maybe some misalignment with the community at large versus what we can actually do here in town. So I will say, despite a pretty heavy turnout of 2,099 votes cast, it was a loss. And we could see that not everybody came to the polls that particular day. If you look up the county voter registration data, there's about 3,964 registered voters here in Johnstown. Obviously, 2,099 or so came out to cast their votes. So we've got a little bit of an opportunity to increase the overall turnout within the community, and you can do that through engagement. So I think that was one thing that the City Council felt, you know, this was kind of disappointing to not get that. We know that we need to do all these things around our town. The money's not going to be available. We've got to work with the same budget. So what do we do here? So as I was approached to develop a scope of work for communications for the city and develop a two-way communication platform for all of us here locally, I said, "Well, I've got to do my due diligence. I've got to interview everybody." So I took the time and energy from that February session through about the middle, late March into April, and I interviewed every single person sitting at the table today. Sean, Jeff, Ryan, Tiffany, Donald, Wesley, Dave, and Bob. Every single conversation was about an hour long, and we focused on the high-level organizational challenges and opportunities and what those goals were. You can see some of those in the comprehensive plan. But then I wanted to take it a next level deeper and talk about what our communication priorities were. Could we actually align those and assign those to some of our general business and organizational objectives? And that's why I say we listened very carefully. And when I say "we," it was mostly me, because I'm the one that conducted all the interviews. Everybody was very respectful of the process that I took everybody through. So thank you so much for not talking to one another and let me go through the paces and glean the information, not to unduly influence the next person. But then, as it happens to be, as I was thinking in the future about, how am I actually going to deliver all of this that we uncover in the plan? This is a big moment in time for our community. What are the things that I need to do to get into place from a resource allocation and team standpoint? Insert Kevin. Right about that time, as I was thinking, boy, I really need to make sure I've got the right resources for our community and put our best foot forward. My friend and old colleague that I went to school with at Ohio Northern, who's been the vice president of communications for the Cleveland Cavaliers, spent time with the Chicago Cubs, and it's just a friend of mine going all the way back to the time where we studied public relations and communications together and eventually served as our national public relations president across the country. He said, "Hey, happens to be that I'm actually going to go independent, and I'm going to start working independently." And I said, "Well, if you could have just been mono from heaven, that's perfect, because we need help in the community. I can't do it alone. I don't even think the staff and the council can do it all alone. We need a team of professionals that can help us." So Kevin, everybody knows me in town. I own Sia Media. I own some other business enterprises as well. I serve in the community through the Johnstown Youth Athletic Association. But Kevin, I'll let you introduce yourself a little bit and say why you got actively said yes to the project.
Yeah, I'm going to need your Dunk Tank to cool off after that. I'm blushing. Hi, everyone. It's really nice to meet you, Kevin Sayhi. Like Frank said...
I can't hear you if the mic doesn't pick you up. It says we broadcast.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Kevin Sayhi, nice to meet you. So I'm over in Delaware, and like Frank said, I've worked for some really nice companies, the Cubs, Cavs, the Ohio State University down the road. And my specialty is really kind of building out strategies for communications and marketing for companies, essentially to be really strategic, that all of your activity, whether it's on social media, PR, emails, publications, it's all really intentional about supporting organizations' goals. It sounds really basic, but you would be surprised at how many companies will just launch social media channels or run a publication or secure stories on the news just to be out there. And they don't really necessarily know why they're doing all that activity. So that's kind of my sweet spot, to make sure that everything is strategic. You know, like Frank said, he called. I was commuting up to Cleveland, and he was just trying to lend my ear, and I'm like, you know, I don't think this community's going to last much longer. Of all the titles I've had, the greatest one I have right now is head coach of my four-year-old's T-ball team, which is a very humbling lesson in humility and patience, if you've ever done that. But we just thought, we really want to stay in this community. And Johnstown actually reminds me of the town that I grew up in in northeast Ohio called Burton, very similar size and everything. So I was thrilled when he called, and then when this opportunity came to possibly work together, I jumped at it. And I'm just, I'm really excited to help support it. So I've dug in, read the whole comprehensive plan. So it was Frank. We've taken notes. We've kind of talked ad nauseam about the challenges and the opportunities I had for Johnstown. So thrilled to be here. I'm a new face today, but I hope not to be a new face moving forward. So thank you for having me.
Awesome. Thank you. So moving forward here, we did listen carefully. We went through a process. I completed the one-on-one interviews, as I mentioned. We digested the comprehensive plan. We reconciled all the observations that we took and translated that into action items, and then obviously began to research about what we might need to actually execute this plan. So you might be wondering, what actually stood out from those conversations? So we distill that very briefly here, but if you can, I'm not sure if everybody in the audience can see this or not, but there were several themes that came through from those interviews. I'll let Kevin speak to the general coloration of the chart here, but this is after some dialogue about what the general themes were.
Yeah, so Frank took notes on all your interviews, which were fun to go through. And we just wanted to see what, you know, we went through the comprehensive plan, right? There's 214 pages, I think. So we digested that, and then he talked to each of you. We want to see what were the main themes that emerged from both of those documents, or the documents and then your conversations, and see what is the challenge that we're really trying to solve for here. So there's really kind of three themes. There's many things that came up, but three themes that were consistent. And number one was capacity. I think every single person here brought up, whether it's bandwidth, from you as a city council and from staff, bandwidth is an issue, and budget goes hand-in-hand with that, right? Like, we're hamstrung from a budget perspective. So that was by far like the most common theme. But then we get into communication, which is why we're here, because there's these issues of being proactive. You know, you mentioned not having a newspaper, and there's, you know, we just don't necessarily have that reliable, consistent form of communication to be proactive with the neighborhood. Building trust. So again, you know, when you don't have that proactive communication and consistent two-way communication, trust is going to be an issue with some folks. Listening to residents, having that forum for two-way communication, and then just consistent activities. So we've got a lot of activities we hear about, but you know, are we leveraging them for the, you know, the common goals that we have as a city? They're awesome to have these activities, but you know, how can we leverage them even further? And then town hall meetings, you know, how can we get people together and discuss? So all of that kind of fell in this bucket of communications and just helping along that front. And then the last theme is really process. So, you know, to do all of these things, like, it doesn't just happen. Like newsletters don't just get put together, right? The meetings don't just happen, bringing folks together, getting that input from residents. It doesn't just happen on its own. It takes, you know, operationalization, where you have to really like plan intentionally to get these insights and act on them. So I'm going to pause here, because Frank had the conversation with you guys in the room. This is kind of representing as a group what emerged from your conversations. Does this, does this feel right? Does it look right? Is there anything missing, or is there any surprises here?
No, I think you hit on them.
A single surprise? Well, that's good. You don't want to uncover too many surprises here, but suffice it to say, because those are there, there are some existing gaps. Now, I know we want to talk about roads and things like that in town, so I intentionally selected this photo to highlight existing gaps, but that is not Johnstown. That is some other city. So we have to bridge the gaps. Like the staff, tools, and resources, issue all those communications and coordinate them. So let's talk about bridging the gap short term. Part of the reason we're both here today is because we've been asked to develop that comprehensive plan from a communication standpoint. And it sort of came through in the conversations about how much activity needed to take place. And then you go through the comprehensive plan, and you look at who all the tasks are actually assigned to, of what needs to be done. And it's mostly the four people sitting at the desk there, right? It falls on the city staff and some of the volunteers. It falls on the city staff and some of the volunteerism from the council here as well. So the number one thing, obviously, I think in order to bridge the gap short-term as budgets start coming in, if taxes are approved with the increase and there's opportunity for more money to fund different things, I think long-term, a public information officer for this city is really the long-term path forward. You need that entity internally that focuses on these activities day in and day out and can collaborate the entire effort. Until you have that resource available internally, you need to work with professionals similar to the two folks sitting here today or standing here today to make the presentation so that you can bridge that gap from a long-term perspective. So short-term, maybe resist the urge to overshare without a specific strategic plan and defined messaging. I do believe that from my initial assessment and analysis, you don't currently possess a lot of the free digital tools at your fingertips to assess whether or not people aren't actually engaging with the material that you put out there regularly. Whether that's tools like Universal Analytics through Google, right, to track the website, monitor what's happening there, platforms like engagement tools and marketing automation platforms like HubSpot, which are available for nonprofit organizations at a very, very affordable rate. These are currently tools that I don't think are either in place or if they are in place, they're currently underutilized because maybe the bandwidth, the knowledge, the wherewithal, whatever the case might be. And that is certainly not a knock on anybody in the room. I think that we ask a lot of everybody within the staff of this city. I heard it with my own ears and listened to the whole conversations. So knowing that you have the comprehensive plan put there and it's in draft mode and there's opportunities to enhance that plan, I think you need to start an active listening and engagement session with the community members in and around Johnstown to make sure that you are featuring the voices of the residents and getting them out. That is a trust-building exercise. It's a credibility-building exercise. And as you invest in efforts like this, if you don't have the platforms to monitor and measure from day one, then you really do yourself a disservice by not having those tools to measure efficacy thereafter. So that then you can step and you can repeat and you can continually improve upon the efforts as you progress. So that's short-term. The bridges do get a little bit longer, so I'll let you talk about the midterm stuff. Midterm means like midlife bridge, not like an election term or anything like that.
Yeah, just to build on a couple of things Frank was saying, on the, you know, on the pausing, you know, just being sure that we're strategic on what we're communicating. You know, a good example, a lot of communications happens with good intent. So sharing out the draft and the strategic plan is really like transparency. That's good, right? Like we all, we love that in our industry too, but it can create questions, right? So right now, there could be 214 pages of questions out there now that you want to make sure that when we share things out, that we're prepared to, A, field those questions, but also ideally get out in front of them, right? So you have the right messaging, so you're kind of teeing up your audience to understand, there's a big document here. It took us a long time to go through it and take notes in detail, but here's the highlights. Here's what we really want you to take away from this. And then people can go dig into it and see if that checks out. But ideally, you're teeing those things up with strategic communication, so...
So are you saying there that transparency is great? Be transparent, but you have to be prepared to be transparent. You just can't say, hey, we're transparent and ignore it. You've got to really be prepared for what's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah. Because that, you know, that's, and it's just about being effective, right? To be an effective communicator, I could go, you know, if I have something that I'm trying to get done, try to make a pitch, but if I go in and share everything, you know, and then, you know, transparency might not be the best thing if I don't have my viewpoint fully locked up and have my goals in mind and exactly how I'm going to get there, right? You could then ask us like, well, you know, what's the plan? We don't know yet. Well, why not, right? And then you get in this spin cycle, right? So our goal is to try to avoid that spin, right? And be as strategic and thorough and intentional as you can with the messaging that tees these things up while you're being transparent. If that makes sense. The other thing I just want to share, that effort to be inclusive and get that feedback, that can be a campaign in itself. You know, think of that as phase one with residents and neighbors where, you know, you're going out there and the message is like, you matter. Like we want to know what's important to you, right? It's important that we're listening to our residents. And you can go out there and for phase one, that can be months long, all our residents and neighbors are hearing is, we want to hear from you. We want your input. Come tell us. Come be here. Here's a survey. Here's every opportunity we have to shape this city's future. And, you know, politely beat them over the head with it so that everyone knows like, okay, I have a chance to weigh in here, right? And those insights are critically valuable to move forward in the next stage for the midterm, but there's also a lot of value in just telling people, you matter. Like your opinions matter. We want to hear from, we need to hear from it if we're going to do this together, right? So that messaging in itself is a really effective kind of like phase one of a campaign, if you will, from a communications standpoint. So midterm, that loop doesn't stop though. You continue that loop. You know, you see, okay, how are we doing, right? What are the things that are still coming up that we can solve for? You get the feedback and then you find out who's influential in these discussions. Those are your centers of influence. So you find out who's on board, who's not, who, you know, who kind of gets it? And then, you know, understands the value of what we're doing here and you leverage those. Because word of mouth, those conversations that happened in the diner, that happened, you know, on the street, when you're walking your dog and you're on the pass and all that, like those conversations matter and what your neighbors think matters way more than what you could put in a, you know, a newspaper, which that matters too, but it's really, you know, getting the pulse of what people really feel. So leverage those centers of influence, make sure that they have a voice, that they're at the table. And that's part of, you know, building a public and private plan too, whether it's, you know, neighborhood organizations, volunteer groups, the city itself, like it makes sense to come to the table. When you build something together, then you have, you know, a stake in it and making it succeed, right? So everyone wants that. But again, going back to one of those themes is process. You have to set the process in place to get everyone to the table, build that together and then you can move forward to getting it done.
Thank you, sir. So the bridge gets a little bit longer, looks like it's maybe in Appalachia in Ohio here. Like Kevin mentioned, the feedback loop never stops. It's something that I think is just germane to any plan that's a strong communications plan. And as you do that, you will show progress, you will build trust. And there's some simple things that were already identified in the comprehensive plan, right? Improving signage, wayfinding into the parks. But I think long-term, as we identify what all these key things are, we also have an opportunity to have a really strong promotional strategy in terms of how we promote Johnstown and how we attract, I guess, the desired audiences and groups into our community, highlighting what's so great about Johnstown versus some of the local municipalities that might be within a 60-minute drive time of the working opportunities that exist within Johnstown in our specific area. And then as we do that, I love that we followed your presentation, Sean, because when you bring people into town and highlight and promote those things to people outside of the community, they're going to find out all the things that we already know and why we're even standing and sitting in this room and why many of you even ran for a seat because there's a lot of great things that happen in our community and it's deserving of promotion to highlight those things. So long-term, that's how you bridge the gap. I don't know if you want to add anything there, Kevin, before we kind of wrap things up here, because I'm looking at my own clock and I started late and we're at like 12 minutes, so I don't want to go too far.
Yeah, hit next. You're fine.
Hit next, okay. Let's go into it. So I think from here, we really just need to talk about the paths forward. I mean, I've got my own opinion, but I think that would probably be biased since I'm the one presenting to you and feel honored that, you know, myself, an area resident who did all this sort of within good faith to present this back to the city and anybody that is listening right now. But I think that would go better probably coming from you because you don't have that sort of bias where you're from this community specifically. You can sort of view it from an outsider's perspective. So I'll let you sort of touch on this and then I'll go to next steps.
Always fun to be queued up as an outsider, right? No, no, you're good. When I was reflecting to Frank, it's like, look, just coming in and digesting everything, right, with those fresh eyes, you know, there's two paths. There's the status quo, right? So regardless of what's happened leading up to this point and then there's this huge opportunity ahead, right? They all know it. It's in the comprehensive plan. There's a reason that plan's developed and redeveloped, right? So then there's the status quo where we can continue without that proactive communication, without the channels that are reaching residents directly, without all that dialogue that needs to take place to build that trust, to pass levies, you know, to get the funding and all the things that we need to be successful as a community. You know, there is the status quo and, you know, it's not to say that there's not a lot of good work happening, but I think we've experienced already by some of the results that have happened, that there's significant challenges with the status quo to really succeed, right? So there's the other path. And, you know, there's a lot of opportunity here as a community. And this is the fun stuff, like just as communications and marketing's fault, like this is where it can get really fun, where you can define Johnstown. You take all that input that residents give, you define your community, you authentically listen and reflect back to the community, who are we? Like what are the strengths? What are the cool events we're doing? And you capture that and then you communicate that not only to ourselves, to as a community, but then maybe a little bit in New Albany, maybe a little bit, you know, elsewhere in Licking County where folks are showing up to work. And you go ahead and you say like, hey, come up the road, you know? Check out, this is what our community is. It's authentic, it's engaging. Look, if you're not into car shows and pie-eating contests and dunk tanks, that's fine, you know, you stay down there. But if you are, and if you like a little bit of a small-town charm, right? Come on up this weekend and check us out, right? And maybe that just happens to be on commute to work at a certain facility that's being developed, right? We can have some fun with it and bring the right type of people here, you know, because again, if you're not into pie, if you turn your nose down at pie-eating contests, I'm sorry, you're missing out, but that's fine. You could stay away, right? But if that, you know, kind of piques your interest, then come on up, right? And then you come up at those times that this community is at its best and you can have some fun like that when it comes to developing this type of campaign to take advantage long-term of the opportunity that we have in front of us in Licking County. So it takes some steps to get there, but that's really, that's the other path. You know, that's the path that we hope to go. And like Frank said, I think there's a long-term best interest for this community, get someone here full-time to help manage a lot of this. And that's just not in communications, marketing. There's a lot of different positions that are outlined in that comprehensive report that, you know, would be good to fill. Our goal is to really kind of help fill that gap, kind of set this community up for success along that journey to get toward that final goal where you can sustain that. But we'd love to help, you know, kick it off, so...
Correct, correct. So as far as, I guess, what I feel are the next steps, I think that the city has really demonstrated some tremendous work with the comprehensive plan. So I don't know who was responsible for that or who organized that or orchestrated the whole thing, but it's a pretty solid document and it's definitely a worthwhile read. There's a page in there that talks about the research that was done within the community. It talked about the number of participants they had, the number of engaged sessions and interviews. My next step would be getting my hands on that research. I want to see who was interviewed. I want to understand the questions that were asked. I want to hear what the recordings were like and see if that is enough or maybe it needs to be more. If you look at the total number, it says 250, but we saw earlier that there's what? Almost 4,000 voters in town? So it's relatively a small sample size for how connected this community is. So I think you can glean some really interesting insights from evaluating that pool of information through our eyes, right? Through professionals that do this market research on a fairly regular basis. But I think that we can, I think that when we reviewed the budget for the city, there wasn't a specific line item for communications, right? So I think the city council actually needs to have some actions amongst yourself to determine, do we want to allocate any kind of budget to this? How important is it to the city? Because I think there's probably going to be a budget reallocation or reappropriation to even fund a project like this, even working with professionals like us. So there's not a specific ask or a specific proposal that says, we want to do this for X dollars or we want to do that for Y dollars, because I still think that whole program still needs to be defined. But the first part of this exercise, and the hours that I've spent in the exercise, gleaning insights from the city council, gleaning insights from Sean and gleaning insights from the comprehensive plan and just what I know about the community at large, was really, really important. So I think that's about it. Well, sure, you can add one thing.
You can add many things. Well, I don't want to surprise Frank, but like, since you made me blush earlier, I'm just going to say, you have a really talented, invested communicator and marketer right here who lives in this community, cares, has donated hours of his time, resources to understand what's happening and really get behind, you know, the future of this community. And he's invested. He's not going anywhere. And so whether I'm, you know, whether you booed me out of the room or not, because I'm over in Delaware, Southern Delaware, you know, and whether we're in Delaware, I just want to point to him as like, he's really someone special to have invested in this effort. And, you know, I would just recommend to the council that he's, you know, when you have something good in front of you, like try to take advantage of that or at least find, you know, someone to partner. Because, you know, he's been a joy to work with. I could feel his passion on it and I hope to support him on it. But I just want to point out, like, he's the real deal and that's all.
Thank you.
Sure. So that's all. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's any questions, we're happy to field them. Thank you all.
So I wanted to bring this presentation to you guys because it is something that all of us has mentioned as communications. Without saying, okay, we're going to go forward, what is council's will? Do we want to look more into this? Maybe send it to safety and service or finance to start looking into? Is this something we wanted to continue or not, looking at?
I think absolutely. I mean, the conversations that Frank and I had, the minutes ticked by fast and, you know, Frank, thank you for having the vision on how, not only to listen, but how to listen. We had a very, I think, productive conversation, a lot, you know, we covered a lot of ground. And I think, you know, if anyone else has any other thoughts, I mean, you help focus some of the energy that I had and identify some of the priorities that I see up in here, so it definitely proves you're listening. I think it gives our community a great asset to start. You know, we're on that short bridge right now, but we want that long-term goal. So I mean, everything I saw outlined out there in my mind is something to start pressing forward with.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Everything I do from this seat is to make sure that Johnstown progresses, does better than they do today, tomorrow and every other day following. And to not provide the community an opportunity to be informed and everything and make it their responsibility to seek it out, I think is a disservice to the community. So whether the information that's shared is in alignment with my views or in opposition really is no matter to me because most importantly is an informed community that makes a decision because my goal is to guide based upon the community's desires to the best of my abilities. So anything that improves communication, improves access to information and increases the community's understanding of what the goals are will cause direction, will cause response either to divert or continue. And I think that's the ultimate goal. So as far as communication with the community and information providing, high, high priority. How we do that, that's up for discussion, but there's nothing here that tells me we should not continue to develop the concept and see where it takes us.
Mr. Barr, you started to say something?
Bob said it right there. I have nothing that I could possibly say better than what he just did.
What could you add to that? That was good.
So do you guys think, feel we should send it to finance to look at? So do you guys think, feel we should send it to Finance to look at what we, what we even have to even work with for this year?
I think, since we have to fund it initially, I think that's where we start, and then maybe we investigate what other committees would follow up as far as content, operational, procedurally, because Finance, that doesn't necessarily cover it, it could, but I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to kind of define that out. But if we don't fund it, it doesn't exist, so I think we start with Finance.
Okay. You guys good with that, then? Okay. We'll move forward with that, and we'll get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
If we were to pursue a contractor to provide these services for us, there's not any of us in this business that, it's almost like you need a consultant to help us formulate what it is we're hiring for and developing a scope of work, which is what you just said there about through our committees of, because there's many, many things of what we want them to do that we may not even think of, that somebody that's a professional to say, well, do you want apple pie or cherry pie?
And one of the things I will highly, highly suggest is that we have someone in this community that does this for us. We worked with somebody that was excellent, but someone who's in this community who knows what's going on helps even more.
Well, sure.
Because I know Sean spent a lot of time having to, you know, brief everything that was going on so that the communications could go out. You know, having that within the community, that the person knows how the community feels, I think would be a benefit, so.
We're going to move on. The next item is citizens' comments on matters on the agenda. Ms. Monroe, do we have anybody that?
No one's coming in.
Does anyone like to speak tonight that's here that not turned on speaker slides? Hearing none, we'll move forward. The next item is executive session with city attorney to discuss imminent court action. I will make a motion that we move to executive session with all council members and the city attorney and the city manager to discuss imminent court action. We will return with further counsel to proceed with.
Can I make one adjustment to that?
Yes.
If you will. Members of council, attorney, and then EMHNT from a consultant capacity for a resource in the discussion of imminent court action.
Along with EMHNT for our consultant. Any second?
Second, yeah.
Ms. Barnard?
Yes.
Wes Cobal?
Yes.
Dave Seeland?
Yes.
Al Borcini?
Yes.
Jeff Barr?
Yes.
Ryan Green?
Yes.
Tiffany Holland?
Yes.
Yes, I've just turned the camera back on.
Okay, we're back in session. We're going to start with council committee reports. Plant and zoning met four twenty-three, twenty-four. Their next is May fourteenth at six thirty in the council chambers. Anything to report from that, Mr. Green?
Yeah, we had a couple of items that came through. We didn't have a full group, so we had one item that kind of deadlocked. But we did pass the demolition of the building there next to Bell Store, and we did not pass the map amendment.
Good. The design review board, they met the same night. Their next meeting is five fourteen at five P M. Anyone with anything on that one?
I can try to fill in the blanks. A couple of sign applications. One of them, one of, one other action item got tabled. And then one approval of a, of a house design on Jersey and Williams, so.
They're starting that one, aren't they?
Yes, it got approved, and the construction will probably begin here shortly.
It already has.
It's already there.
Yeah.
I think the footage is going in.
Yep.
Footage and.
Finance was supposed to meet tonight. Our meeting will instead meet on the twenty-first at five P M. In the administrative conference room. Come for that one. We'll have lots of information. Safety and service, they had a meeting tonight. It was a really good meeting. Their next one will be June fourth. Do you guys have anything to report from that one?
Nope, just ongoing conversation of a few things for the crosswalk downtown, where we want to go with that. The corridor there, the Wendy's to Bigelow corridor there, and a few other items.
And then the school district liaison met on April twenty-sixth. Do you guys have anything to report on that one?
Sure. Continued communication for making sure our plans for the future are aligned. General discussion about expectations for school growth, how it impacts the city, how what the city does impacts the schools and vice versa. Good meeting.
Great. Any, any discussion on the parks board, specifically the ten-year? The ten-year life of that?
Not that particular meeting. I, I do believe it was in, on the initial ideas or agenda to discuss, but it went long on what we were talking about. But I think that's something we could circle back on, because I agree, I think it's something we need to get, get the fire lit under and get moving ahead. So I'll make a note, and we'll see if we can get further progress on that in the short term.
Did they move on their applicants?
They interviewed them. I don't know.
I know they interviewed, but I don't know if they made any selections. I haven't heard.
They had a meeting after our meeting scheduled, so there may be additional information that came from that. Their, their regular meeting scheduled.
Are we, as a group? I mean, I know we, we would also have to take some action because ours reads the same of ten years. We would need to take action to remove that. Are we, as a group, should we, I don't know when and where would be appropriate, what have you not, but are we all on the same page? Are we, do, do, do we have a different view? Again, I don't know if.
I think it should go, I think the ten years should be lifted as long as they don't try to put a levy on until we get our tax passed, so that we're not competing with them. That would be my only concern.
So you're, you're, you're put, I'm going to be careful what I say.
They have to appoint, they have to get their feet underneath them to even get there anyway.
Yes, so I think, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anything has to be said to say, well, you can't do this and do this, because they'd still be a ways away from.
Yes, and I've got some ideas on how to help them until we get, till they get to that point, so that I want to share with you when we can meet, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know how the Park and Rec District rolls up. I don't think it would roll up through a committee. I think it would be just a motion and action by the entire council. Right? I don't, I don't know as far as review process, because we don't have a committee that seems to fall in.
No, it would just be council.
Because they're, they're their own body. We would just.
They don't, they don't answer to us, and they don't answer to the school board.
Well, we'd work through the school board to, I guess, align or discuss our future thoughts on it, and then the school would pass their version. We would pass.
We would run it.
Teresa Kin.
Ideally simultaneously or neosimultaneously of, of getting it there. I want to get that on track, though. I'm not quite sure how to get it done. Obviously, you two and those.
I want to rely on your expertise on the nuts and bolts of it, and I'll commit to start the communications and drive the communications to push this to the front of the, the line as far as action items.
Teresa, can you look into it with Yaz on the procedures on how to remove that from our point of view? If it's just a resolution, what it would take for us to get it removed? And that way we know.
Excuse me?
Just removed or changed to a different time period, just removed so it's.
It's removed, so it's in perpetuity. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Even if it's in perpetuity, you can always go back and peel it back and say, it doesn't exist anymore.
Sure.
Either entity can do that.
Yeah, so we'll find out the procedures, and that way we know and we can start moving on.
Okay, thank you.
Director reports, we received the department, our sewer, water, and street. Does anyone have any questions on those reports? Hearing none. Jack, would you like to go over your report real quick?
Yes, quickly I'll cover the water plant update. Basically, I had a meeting with the C Mar and just more looking over the plant to formulate a G M P for the work coming. And more discussions with Jacobs about options for the water plant. Hopefully, this Friday, we'll, we'll have those numbers locked in, and I can get those to Sean to digest and see about moving forward. Wastewater plant, Bowen came out and did a plant tour of the wastewater plant. They are vying for the C Mar position on the wastewater plant upgrade. So they came out, looked at things. We also had a tour, structure point engineering, brought a client out to look at our press and the agri hauling, which is new for us this year since we're no longer hauling to the local farmer. That has, well, actually started and completed one of their three hauls that will happen for the city this year. Third item was the East Jersey project. That road is ready to accept. Sean, what is going to be the guideline of how that's going to happen? That road's been completed. Everything has been checked off the list. It's, it's ready for the city to accept that work and start its one-year warranty period. I think the construction company would like us to backdate a little bit because they have, you know, their, their punch list has been done for a while on that. So procedurally, how, how do you want to handle accepting that project?
How's it been done in the past, Teresa? Is this a resolution or is it just a general acceptance? Now, I know with developers, a little bit different because we already have the right of way. In this particular situation, it's not a right-of-way acceptance. Maybe that's a little wrong in my analysis, but accepting the improvements is different than construction from a development standpoint. I'll defer how we've done in the past, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think it's a resolution if, if you, you know, here again, it's not a new road, as you said, Sean, that we're going to take.
Right.
And start maintaining. It's, it's just that the project is completed, and they do have a one-year warranty period on, on that, on those items.
Okay.
Such as the water line installation, the curb gutter and all that. They would like that clock to start.
I'm sure we've done that with some other projects around town, so if we can just get some templates that we've used in the past, that'll be helpful to draft something, and then we can look it over and make sure.
I really believe it's just a resolution on that. Item four, the Pulte Housing Project, as built maps are in, they are correct. Everything is correct. It looks good. We still are going to hold off on acceptance of that project because we're having a little bit of trouble with that lift station. And they're getting so close to completion, since we are plowing anyway, which was one of their main big, you know, concerns in the winter, maybe it makes sense just to wait to accept the whole project as one. Because I don't think there are any lots left unsold. I think they're building on it.
They're all sold. I think even the models in contract right now.
That, that's what I'm saying. I, I think, you know, maybe instead of doing it and then doing that little piece of a road that's left, maybe let them complete it and bring that in all at once. As was brought up in the safety service, we had meetings with Concord Crossing, met with Mike Reeves, Mike Keller, and Sean to discuss stormwater issues. And that is ongoing. I'm not seeing any work done at the Cogline Apartments. It's been sitting empty for a while. If somebody knows something else about that, you can let me know, but no work has been going on for quite a while there. We had item seven, the large tower, the million gallon tower, went through its inspection, if you remember, a year ago. We had it down, put new coatings on the inside of it, and that is done. It was inspected, all was as expected and in good condition. Item eight, I've been talking with John Marr from E M H and T. We, we found a few items that are not clean in our specs, so I've been working with him to clean those specs up. And Sean, ask him to contact you. I've got a fire hydrant spec model number problem that I'm taking care of as well. And then we would like to get those changed and put it in specs before Schley Ball starts ordering for their next section.
Yeah, and I got with Teresa on those and gave her a physical copy. I think John's going to give us a digital copy so that we can update those on our web from a spec sheet. We also may want to do some type of resolution in council identifying those spec sheets. I'm not sure if that's been done in the past, but that may be a provision that we move forward with, just the acceptance of those from some type of formal resolution. Doesn't have to be an ordinance. I'll, I'll kind of recalibrate with Teresa and figure out the best process moving forward.
Yeah, what I did was I sent him the model numbers, the size, length, and, and my crews, my inspectors, inspection sheets, what they're looking for. And to clean up that problem on your boxes, because they had an old, I'm, I'm surprised, because I thought those had been taken care of, but they had an old curb box model instead of the new one.
Right.
And then we're also going to clean up some fire. I went through and.
Good deal.
Going to clean that up. So John Marr will be in contact with you as soon as I get that completed. Item number nine, the Johnstown C C R is completed, and Teresa, is that up on our city website?
It's been updated on the website, and it's, the notice and the link have been sent out on the last two months.
On the last two months' bills, thank you. So the C C R is the Consumer Confidence Report on the water. And it just tells all the tests we run, that we're in compliance with the EPA and all as well. Obviously, if we weren't in compliance on anything, that has to be reported on that C C R as well. One last item that is in April, it happened in April. I want to put out a thank you and let you know the, the water, street, and sewer guys had one heck of a week last week. We had three breaks in one week. Two service lines went that were our side, our section to repair, and they did. And we had a fairly extensive break up on Pershing, at the corner of Pershing and Upham. We had to cut out six feet of a water main and replace it. And in that repair, we did a lot of inspection. That water main is an old ductal main. It's pitted very severely. And I think this is going to be a continual problem. We've probably had five repairs on that line in the last seven years. So with direction from Sean, I, I think maybe we'll talk, I'll talk to E M H and T and see about replacing that line from Pershing and Upham all the way over to Fairview. We did phase one of it a couple of years ago, which was from Edwards Road to Pershing, up, Upham. But now that other section is, we're, we probably had in that section that was not replaced, five repairs in the last seven years. And that is, that's a lot for a section of line. It basically tells you it wasn't a one, one timeout. That, that line is probably going to be a constant problem from here on.
What's the age of that, you think?
Nineteen fifty.
Well.
Sixty years.
I've been here for forty-three years, and we've never done that, anything but repair it. So it's at least that old, but I'm going to say, Sean, that section of the town, probably late sixties.
Sixties, yeah, fifty, late fifties, early sixties, I think. Up them reminds me of the Heimerle Smith Building of Houses era that happened over there.
Yeah, I, I didn't know those houses like where Brobeck were at were quite that old.
No, Brobeck's is a newer one. I think some of the old ranches are.
Used to live. I don't know if it's.
They're, they're sixty-plus, if not approaching seventy.
Anyway, yes, they're, it's, it's time. It's, it's served, it's, it's serviced, but we are having quite a few repairs on there. But what I went here was, you know, the, the crew stayed late, worked late, tough conditions, water flowing. And I just want to bring that forward, that they did a great job, and, and you guys, I think that would be.
Let them know that we appreciate it.
Probably the work that they did there. And then it happened back to back. They had a day off, and then we had another one, so.
Was that the house I got to call on?
Yes. And I let you know when we got in, took care of that. That's the one we let go that evening and did the repair the next morning. So they, they had a, quite a week right there, but we got through it, got it done.
Thank them. Awesome.
That's all I have.
Before we get to legislation, just let residents know, I don't think it affects any residents of the city of Johnstown, but possibly Monroe Township and others. The president signed a disaster document labeling Licking County, Johnstown. labeling Licking County, Johnstown for the March tornadoes that hit. If you have tornado damage, go to our website. There's a document that gives information on what you can do to get help with that. So we were labeled a declaration or disaster zone. Tabled legislation, resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, a resolution to adopt the proposed comprehensive plan as presented, tabled April fourth. That plan is not back to us. They are working on the edits from the zoning. So hopefully we'll get that back in the next council meeting and can take a look at it and make a motion. But that one should stay tabled at this point. Public hearings of legislation, resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Licking County Transportation Improvement District. And this involves the money that we'll be receiving from the state for the looking at sixty-two thirty-seven intersection. If you'd like to explain more, Mr. Senator.
This is part of the TID project that got awarded last year, that ninety million dollars. Of that ninety million, this is one of the projects. This is a million dollars and this is more for some short, medium and long term solutions. So not a million dollars to fix necessarily all of the problems that exist there, but some to maybe identify some low hanging fruit from a fixing standpoint, but then also bringing in into this million dollar number of study that would facilitate maybe some future action items. That could be that long term, identifying another roadway segment to create an outer belt to get the truck traffic and the through traffic outside of the Johnstown. So what this is, and I've talked to, I think, finance in a committee meeting about this really briefly. And I'll walk the wave tops on this. If you have questions, feel free to ask. With that million dollars. This is a funding challenge for for the TID. They don't get the funding until the project's necessarily completed, or at least a phase of the project is completed. So with that, they have to do some work, get it completed and then and then get reimbursed. So that presents some challenges whenever you're looking at ninety million dollars worth of projects. So what they've started to design is kind of a, an investment from the city to fund these particular things. But it be reimbursed at the end of the project. So what is in this particular agreement is not only the ability for us to work together, but a financial piece that we would provide. One hundred and fifteen thousand, make sure I got my numbers right here, one hundred and fifteen thousand. We'll call it a loan piece that would be provided to Licking County Transportation District. Another ten thousand is a fee. Now, that ten thousand would not be reimbursable. That is the fee for the TID to do kind of the consulting work that's associated with this particular project. If you don't like the fee, you can go argue with them, but it's a pretty standard straightforward fee that exists with all of the projects that are happening throughout the county. That's, they don't work for free either. They have their staff. So this is the part that goes to pay for some other staff. So that hundred and fifteen, you'll notice in the document, if you've read through it, that it is reimbursed, I believe, in two thousand twenty-seven. Yes, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, the one hundred and fifteen thousand would be reimbursed to the city. So essentially, that's what this is. It's just a document identifying the willingness to work together on this project as well as the funding mechanism that we're going to provide for them in order to get the project going. And then they'll keep recirculating that initial one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar investment. Other than that, that's it.
Anybody have any questions?
What line item are we, are we proposing to pay this out of?
So, good question. We would be able to take this out of the CIP fund. We do not identify any projects this year from the CIP. According to our ordinance, twenty-eight percent of our income tax has to be funneled towards the CIP. I don't know if we put any, any thing in place for our CIP this year. I'll have to go back and check. If not, you may see a reappropriation ordinance come down the line with the CIP. But is there a placeholder in there? I thought we did.
We may have to do an appropriation.
Okay.
Even though it's in there as a resolution.
Okay, so we may need to do a resolution, but from an ordinance standpoint, we did put a placeholder in there at the beginning of the year. So it is incorporated into your budget from a CIP standpoint. So we can appropriate the funds for this particular project. Probably wouldn't hurt us to have a resolution and maybe this can serve as the resolution. We'll get together a staff and make sure that we cross our eyes on our t's backwards.
Anybody else with questions?
Do we have much say in what they find afterwards? I mean, you know what I mean? Or is it just?
Great question.
This, this is it and thanks for your, your loan.
No, so we'll have a fair amount of input, is what I'll put out there. Input into what we hope to achieve out of this, this exercise. So I've already communicated to the selected engineer, soon to be selected engineer, that Johnstown is not looking for a five lane superhighway. It would facilitate the traffic needs, but that doesn't facilitate the community needs. And so if you come to us with a design plan that incorporates a five lane traffic thoroughfare, you're probably not going to get much support from that initiative. So that's where we have input. They're going to take that into consideration whenever they're designing some initiatives that can help alleviate some of this. The other piece of that is, is we will also have MKSK and our engineering staff to give them guidance on what we see as appropriate. And no plan, whether they put it together or not, has to be accepted by council unless you feel like it represents what your wishes and desires are. So, yeah, they can put together a plan, but they would be who themselves to get input on what we want to have happen. Because this is a, a first step. If if they intend to continue this project in any type of capacity, they're going to need general buy-in from this body whenever they go to the state and apply for grants or any other type of funding. And if the state comes to us and says, we don't like the plan, then they're not going to issue any type of funds. So the engineer is going to want to make sure that we're going to be the cheerleader behind whatever initiative is out there so that the state has some likelihood of doing any type of funding for any further exercises, the medium term and the long term outcomes.
Any other questions? Any questions from a resident? Hearing none. What is the will of council on this item?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen from CIP funds utilizing CIP funds.
Second.
Bob Rossini.
Yes.
Jeff Barr.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Tiffany Hollis.
Yes.
Deb Barna.
Yes.
Wes Hobel.
Yes.
Moving on to resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, an ordinance establishing and amending certain fees for planning and zoning services provided by the city of Johnstown and setting aside all other fees previously established. So I'm guessing that these fees came up when we had our zoning appeal and we saw how much it cost us for a zoning appeal versus how much we charged. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is a variety of things and I would tell you, this would probably not be the last time you see a fee structure put in front of you before the end of the year, only because we're reassessing these things kind of as they come. I think we did this last year and we're doing it again. There's some new pieces in here that represent some of the processes that are in place. I'll start with the zoning appeal. Right now it's set at two hundred dollars. There is no way that covered the staff's time or the legal time.
How much did we spend in legal for this?
Oh, for that? I can get you an exact number, but I don't.
Just an estimate.
Yeah, this is anywhere from a hundred to a hundred fifty dollars an hour. So that, you know, you got to include drive time. We had two meetings. So.
Six hundred bucks so far.
Yeah, six hundred, not including Trevor's time from a, a planning and zoning.
Can we increase that from three fi- two hundred to five hundred?
Where did the, where did the three fifty come from? Was that like Morpsy's average or?
No, so that was just generally us trying to move the needle a little bit further towards where it probably needs to be. So if council wants to be more aggressive, we're trying to be reactive to the needs of the community whenever, if they do feel a grievance. I don't want to make the, I don't want to make the bar too high. Maybe that's the wrong way to put it. But I don't want to discourage someone from issuing a grievance if they genuinely feel that they have been, you know, wrong.
Would it be possible to do it like in different grade, like grades, like grade A appeal or, you know, like if it's like a.
I only wish. That's a great thought. I think it would be challenging because then you would borderline the discriminatory of someone that gets the lesser amount. How are, how are they?
I guess maybe like residential versus like commercial kind of.
You could do a residential versus commercial. That's a great thought. If you wanted to do a residential piece. If it was a larger residential component, so if you had a whole planned district or a whole neighborhood such as, and I'm throwing out.
Okay, individual residential.
Individual residential. That one's a little trickier.
So if we just have like, say, one house, make it two hundred, but if they're going to go.
If you're talking about an entire subdivision, such as Schley Ball that feels aggrieved, they are zone residential, they could appeal the decision. That's going to take probably a lot more work.
That's what I was thinking as well.
Yeah, I don't know how you define, the only way you.
How about this for now? How about we increase it to five hundred for now? That catches anything in the short term until you come up with a new plan of how we can tier this better.
I'll chew on that for a little while. I mean, some of it, you go back to square footage of a lot. That could be a metrics. We do that with plan developments and things. Whenever they're submitting a plan, it goes by acreage. But sometimes the legal work involved with a quarter acre downtown segment is going to be just as arduous as, you know, the three to five acre site. So it's really hard to determine until you walk through the exercise. But I'll, I'll, I'll do some thinking on it, see if I can come up with something.
So we're looking at a, running just through a couple here. I mean, I always want to be like regionally, you know, sound, kind of where everybody else is. We're well above Newark, I'll tell you that, but they do define it residential versus commercial. Trying to get New Albany's to come up here, but take a look. I'm surprised Mor- Morpsy or somebody doesn't have like an average.
It could. And and some of that, I think, is is individually based. I mean, we don't have a planning firm that is a planner that's here. So that's outsourced. Legal wise, this is not something that we're accustomed to, so we bring in the legal team in order to facilitate these things.
How many of these do we have a year usually?
One like that one, I've, we've had two, I think, since I've been on zoning.
Okay, so it's very rare.
Yeah.
I would, I would expect frequency to increase.
Okay. Yeah. So what do you guys want to do? Do you want to leave it at two hundred till we find something? Increase it three fifty, five hundred for now? We're eating the cost on these things at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't think the, the figure we set now is as important as figuring out a better process. Because I agree, we don't want to make it prohibitive for a, a resident to come with a concern. But at the same time, that sword cuts the other way. We don't want someone to make it a cost detriment to us by just dragging out a process because the awareness is there that, you know, it, it, it costs me three hundred bucks to, you know, create a problem. You know, so if we can, if we can figure out or investigate better systems, better processes, better fee structure, that's where my interest lies. Three to five hundred dollars, I mean, I think the ultimate solution will come in short enough order that whatever this number is, isn't, isn't going to be val- isn't going to be relevant in any significant way.
Okay.
So to move it along, I heard the mayor state five hundred on the documents, three fifty. Is there a general consensus to move one way or the other on this particular number?
I'm okay with getting something raised with the review, maybe not as high as five, to the point of it's not a detriment to the applicant on an individual basis.
So I'll throw a, a conversation starter out there. We can do residential, starting at three hundred and commercial, starting at four hundred?
Yeah, I think it's, I'd say commercial go to five hundred.
There you go.
I'd say.
Hey, it's all I needed.
Just skimming three or four cities that are close to us here. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Well above Newark. They were two hundred.
So whenever we make the motion, if you desire, we'll make the motion with the provision that the zoning appeal process for residential be set at three hundred and the commercial zoning appeal process be set at five hundred. The next one I'll walk through is certificate of appropriateness. So right now, we have a major environmental change, which constitutes three hundred dollars. That would stay the same. Major environmental change signage. Right now, if somebody does a sign application, they get ding for a sign permit. I would hate for them to walk through another exercise of addition to the two fifty for the sign permit, plus the square footage. One fifty. We're going to charge you another three hundred for, for that, which is even more than the sign permit itself. So major environmental changes, they relate to signs, seventy-five was what was tossed out. Minor environment, environmental change, we had toyed with that about a year ago. We're continuing to see these. They do take some staff time, my time, whenever I have to review these. That's the way the ordinance is set up. So if somebody wants to do a project such as shingles or re-roof, or I'm sorry, re-side a house in some way, it could be a hundred dollars, it could be fifty dollars, but I just want to see the city stop losing money for my services or Terry's services and some kind of, some type of revenue being backfilled into the city for some of the services that are provided. So we've got it in at a hundred, more than willing to listen to conversations on that if you feel any of those first three are out of line.
I'm good with them.
Hearing none on that. Next is the design plan. So as we continue to work through our ordinances, we find little pieces in there that we didn't have associated with permit fees. One of those was the design plan. We had an applicant just recently had to go through a design plan. It's required, but a COA is not required. COA is required only if it's commercially zoned. With residentially zoned, it requires a design plan. We didn't have any fee associated with that, so at that point, we could not charge them any fee. For that applicant, I think it worked out pretty well because some of the things that they had to go through on a timing situation. So moving forward though, I'd hate to see us go through an exercise of a design plan and not walk away with any of the cost to reimburse some staff. So right there, I've got three hundred. It's similar situation to the certificate of appropriateness. That's why that number was defined at three hundred. Pool permit, I don't believe this existed either, but it has been charged over the last couple of years, we come to find out. So if we are going to charge it, I feel like we've got to put it in a document that highlights the fee that we're going to charge or else we shouldn't be charging it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I believe they used to charge it under, or something, but I think they were trying to separate so that the, what was actually being applied for was clear, so.
You should get a fence permit off that, too.
Should.
Yeah.
Technically speaking, yeah. So, so pool permit, putting it at a fifty. And that's all I had. But like I said, it's not going to be uncommon for you guys to have to revisit these.
Yes, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
General question on permitting, Sean. When someone comes to the, the city for a permit, does the city check to see if it is approved by a local HOA, a deed restriction or some other governing body? Or is that an additional responsibility to the constructor?
That is an additional responsibility to the constructor. We check for compliance with city ordinances. HOA stuff, that's going to be on them to do their due diligence. We try not to dive into the realm of HOA only because that becomes a civil matter between that HOA and that particular property owner. And we technically don't have any jurisdiction and we can't withhold a permit because they're in violation of their HOA because that's a separate agreement that they have with that particular HOA.
So that would, that would be, that would work in the inverse, that the city's approval does not approve to any other contracts you've entered into or restrictions that are associated with your property.
You got it.
County is about the only one that checks to see if you have your city stuff done.
Now, we just, we have a little bit of everything here, right? Deed restrictions, HOAs and all that. I want, I just want to make sure that it was out there so there's no confusion that, well, the city said it was okay.
Yeah.
It is okay if everything, city. There are, there are other obligations and contractual requirements you may be with un- under.
So I'll tee it up and then if there's a motion, you go ahead. But what's on the table now is an approval of this particular resolution with zoning appeal being set at three hundred for residential, five hundred for commercial. All other suggested changes would remain this as, as submitted and drafted. And then I'm going to leave it at that.
Any other questions on that? Since there's no residents, there's no comments. Do we have any action on this side? What is the will of council?
Motion dies.
Motion dies?
Bob had a heavy sigh over there.
Uh, uh, so we're going to let, continue charging the fees we're charging?
That would be.
That's what I'm getting, I'm not hearing a motion.
I'm fine, I'll do whatever y'all want to. I got no dog in the fight.
How many, how many edits did we have? Did we add, just change the one and we added commercial and residential?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, seven.
So, so the motion would be to change the fees.
No, just pass resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen.
Make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-four eighteen.
With the revisions.
Revisions that was discussed.
I'll second.
Now it's just yes or no.
Jeff Barr.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Tiffany Hollis.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Wes Cobble.
Yes.
Dave Seelin.
Yes.
Bob Rossini.
Yes.
Okay. Um, no other introduction of legislation, any other business? And just so you're aware, there's a storm coming and it looks pretty bad. I sent Dave home since he lives in Hilliard and he's got a.
And it has a. Generator's running, we're good.
Try to get him home before he's on the road in it.
Um, only thing I had was, uh, what is that? This weekend is the concert out at Sportsman's Club, is that next weekend? All right, next weekend is the concert out at Sportsman's Club. Yeah.
Next weekend's also the cleanup.
Is the clean sweep, what else do we have?
Okay, or the zero K.
Check this schedule here.
The zero K.
Zero K.
And American Legion breakfast.
On the seventeenth and eighteenth?
Yep, yes.
I'll be out of town.
Not forget that Mother's Day is this Sunday, correct?
Mother's Day is this Sunday.
Everything else is second.
And so to the two mothers in here, hope you have a wonderful Mother's Day this weekend.
Well, thank you.
And those that serve the role in absence of.
I'm not talking about me.
His general statement.
I will also throw out, uh, that, um, it is, uh, teacher appreciation week. So thank all the great teachers out there. Mr. Seelin here as well, so.
You're one of them.
Well, I, I don't count.
You do.
By any ways, yeah, they, they do a lot and, and I've really, from the last couple of months, I've, I've really seen what they do. And, uh, I really appreciate what they do.
Is council aware of the, um, seven, seven, nine, five or two, five Walton Parkway with Columbus State and the program that they're doing with, um,
Columbus State?
For the, um, oh, what do I want to say? Manu- not, not Intel's manufacturing, but just, I'll forward the article.
Okay.
It's easier to say it that way.
Anybody else with any other business? It's been a long night. Can we take just five minutes for executive session, literally just five minutes? Just to let everybody know what's going on and no discussion, they can just leave then.
It's, it's, it's your barbecue.
I, I just, I just need five minutes and we'll be done.
Let's get it done.
So, well, by the new council rules, you're requesting executive session. Sean's going to approve that it's deemed to be appropriate as an emergency.
No, it's already on the agenda.
No, it's already on, yeah, it's already on.
So we approved the agenda earlier.
Yep. So I make a motion, we move to executive session, discuss confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance with only the city manager and council. There will be no other business afterward and we'll adjourn. That's second.
John Barnard.
Yes.
Wes Cobble.
Yes.
Dave Seelin.
Yes.
Bob Rossini.
Yes.
Jeff Barr.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.